Well, we just heard from you. Valeria. Good to see you. Ally Holzclaw, are you out there?
Ally won't be attending these meetings anymore. This is Angela Passana. Yeah, Ally's in a different role now, so I will be attending for now.
Okay. Alyssa Severson?
Hello.
Hi. DeeDee Smith? Diane Teeman? Jennifer Jackson?
I'm here.
Christina Simpson? Lloyd Commander? Good to see you.
Yeah.
Michael Cherry? Don't see her. Modesta? Where's my girl? Sonya Moody-Hirado? There you are. I see you.
I'm, I'm here. Alyssa has a conflicting meeting, so she won't be here today.
Okay. All right, and then we have some open seats, but let's go through and make sure that we have how many tribes we have represented today, okay? So, one, two. Angie, you're here for Grand Ron, right? Angie Blackwell?
Both Angies.
Both Angies, both Angies are here for Grand Ron. Okay, sorry. So, one, two, three, four.
And Christina Simpson will be here. She's just running a little late.
Six. Well, we have six tribal representatives in the room, so we're, we're good.
Wonderful. That makes forum. And it looks like you're first on the list there, too. Sandy, about giving us October meeting recap.
I have the printout, Valeria, I have the printout, so it's not necessary for you to pop the screen, but thank you for the offer of doing that in the email. I appreciate that. So, our October meeting was a productive meeting. We did review position descriptions for the Tribal Affairs Director, Tribal Affairs Manager, or the Alliance Manager, Tribal Affairs Program Coordinator, and the Equity and Civil Rights Specialist, so reviewed all of those position descriptions. Alyssa's made some edits on them, sent them out to, and it's gonna send them out to us, sent them out to us for feedback on those. So I hope people have received those, yes? Yes. Okay, good. And we're ready to give some feedback. All right, excellent. And then the decision was made to use the current biennium funds for the website development in the amount of about $50,000, which leaves about $133,444 for each of the tribes that are part of the Alliance. And we had some questions around the use of the funds, so some clarity were given there. Even though they were pretty broadly written, we do have a couple of, as we look at this, a couple of things that would, would not qualify. So yes, you can do wage is, wage increases for our early learning staff. You can do an expansion of your program services, like a Cultural Monday, family activity boxes, you know, mailed out or sent directly to families. Funds cannot be used for capital investments, so like purchasing a van or van or bus for transportation, or a capital improvement, so like adding a classroom, right, physically adding the infrastructure to have a classroom, so no capital and capital improvement, capital investments. We do need to talk about the grievance process, and grievance is kind of a multi-definition term as we are working on the, from the Alliance side. It is on today's agenda, and we'll talk about some parameters around that, that process. And then Alyssa introduced the topic of the Early Learning Committee, or Commission, excuse me, Strategic Planning Sessions, and the fact that our input needs to be in on that, and we should be giving thoughtful and thoughtful input on that, as we are a big part of that early learning group. So, and what, and what we fought for, right, that good quality consultation is what the tribes have pushed for forever, so here's our opportunity to have some good, good input on it. So that was the recap from the October meeting. And I'm gonna hand that back to my friend Valerie.
Wonderful. Thank you, Sandy. Does anybody have any questions, or, you know, want to talk a little bit more about the recap?
And if it's a, we can discuss it in the breakout session, if it's something that, that we feel like we need to be tribal about.
And Valerie, if it's helpful, I think you're the one that asked the, like, the van question. We'd be happy to kind of sit with each tribe. If there's something you do want to purchase that's capital, we could look at the other funding options and how you might be able to buy that with something else, and then use these dollars to backfill. So happy to kind of get creative to see if we can get at some of those capital investments that aren't allowable uses under these funding streams.
Thank you. And I just say, I know that everybody's already probably said it, because I got on late. Welcome back, Valeria.
Thank you, Val. I'm so excited to see all of you and, and be back in this community, and I heard some of the great progress that you guys have made, and I'm ready to jump back in and support everything that you're doing, so thank you for the welcome, everyone.
Okay, well, if there isn't any more questions, maybe we could go ahead and go to the breakout, and if there's some things we wanted to discuss, and we'll just pop right back in if we don't take up the full 20 minutes.
Perfect. I will go ahead and put you guys in that breakout room.
So Valerie or Sandy, was there anything out of the breakout session that we should capture? As far as notes or just recap purposes?
Sorry, my mic was on mute. So it's yours, Sandy.
The answer is yes. Job descriptions, and so, so let's talk about, one of the members was kind enough to share their screen, so we all had the opportunity to go through and look at them. And Valerie, why don't you share with them what we, what we've come up with on that, on the 35%, the, the consultation piece?
Sure. We, what we did was we looked at the breakdown of the percentages that you have for duties, and there, you know, we wanted to get a little bit more clarification and make sure that those were the percentages that you were wanting this person to concentrate on. And not only that, that the, you know, and then we also wanted clarification on the tribal affairs position that the consultation, that we strike out consultation from government to government, but, and then, because we know that's you, you know, and that, that, that isn't, you know, consultation shouldn't be handed down to, to another level. It should be with you. Any more? Anybody want to add? To that, Sandy or Modesta?
I, I think that was the overall general discussion that we were having. It was the, the term consultation, because within government-to-government relationship, that's a pretty big word, and our consultation processes are very different between the nine tribes. We've already established with the Oregon Department of Education, this process of consulting with the nine tribes, and to bring it down to the management, the manager level was not something we thought was appropriate. So I think Lloyd had mentioned just the removal of consultation in that section would remove our questioning that, that portion of it, so.
That's really helpful. Yes, we can remove that and make adjustments. I know for the OPA III, the position that would really be focused on OTELA, that's gonna have the most overhaul, since we knew it was too repetitive, so we can take that feedback, and Valeria will work on rewriting it, and we'll send it back out to everybody to make sure it's a, it's reflecting what you're hoping to get out of the OTELA manager, separate from Valeria's position or my role as the Agency Director. That's great.
I do want to ask if, if the TAC also has any recommendations, how they'd want us to, because we're gonna take out that piece, and that is 35% of the duties that are allocated for this position, would you want to see an increase in any of the other areas that you felt there wasn't enough? Maybe going towards that, or?
I don't think it, we wanted it taken out. We just wanted the word consultation taken out, that the,
The word.
Yeah, that the person, you know, is still responsible for those duties as a manager. However, consultation is not going, going to be a part of there. I mean, you know, maybe they'll, they'll help with setting up meetings and stuff like that, but you know, but they, they aren't the person we're gonna consult with. Right. Is that right, Sonya?
Yeah, it wouldn't be at that level. It would be above that position, but they could still help with the work and what's being consulted on, but they wouldn't be the ones meeting with either our tribal councils or council-appointed staff.
Great. We'll work on that. Does that help, Valeria?
Yeah, that helps a lot, because I can go through and comb through if there are any other areas to, or minor details of that kind of allude to that, you know? And then just bring it back to you all for your consideration.
Valeria, I just had concern when we were talking, because sometimes we're in meetings with agencies or entities from CTCLUCI, working back and forth with people, and then when those folks comment about it, they say they were in consultation with us, and that's not what it was. It was a meeting with the staff, and/or it was a meeting with one of the tribal, seven tribal council members, and that's problematic. And especially it's problematic when they present that to the public as having met with the tribes. So that, that was a concern for, from myself on, on our, on our side.
Thank you for pointing that out. I think that that's really important to elevate and make sure that we are being strong with the language that we use in differentiating what true consultation is and what a meeting is.
Okay. So, sounds like we got some feedback. We'll make, make some edits to the documents. Valeria and Alyssa will get that back, communicated back out to the TAC, what's as edits are made, to see if there's any further feedback. So I think if there's nothing else on that discussion, we could move on to the next agenda item, which is the Raise Up Oregon. So Alyssa, if you want to kick that off.
Great, thank you. So I know we mentioned this at our last TAC meeting, but the Early Learning Council is in the process of creating the next iteration of the Early Learning System Strategic Plan. So this strategic plan is not tied to just the Early Learning Division or the Department of Early Learning and Care, but is really encompassing the entire system and the five key sectors that make up that system. So this was developed about five years ago. We started the process with the council, and one of the things that really was lacking was there was no tribal consultation, and so there are no explicit strategies or objectives related to tribal children and families. And so now that we are preparing for the next iteration of this and looking at the next five years, it was really important to us that we brought this forward to you all at the front end to look at what's currently in the strategic plan that goes through next year, and what do you want to see in the next iteration of the strategic plan? And how do you want the goals, outcomes, objectives for tribal children and their families to be reflected? And how do you kind of want to engage in this work going forward? So we're in the really early stages of this. We've been spending, really this fall, starting to have conversations with early learning hubs, agency partners, advocacy partners, to look at what's currently in the plan, and we're preparing to have a reflection document that captures all the feedback we've received in December for the Early Learning Council to review, and then we'll walk through the timeline, really for the next year, to design what we're calling right now Raise Up Oregon 2.0, and really make sure that we are being intentional and having that strong consultation throughout this process and beyond, because this really is going to hopefully be a roadmap for all of our work together, and I think there's a lot of opportunity as OTELA gets launched and sort of how you all want to see that work align. So Sue Miller is here. She's our Early Learning Council Chair, and of course Angie is our Early Learning Council Representative on the TAC. And Sue, I'll let you introduce yourself, and Sue and Angie, if there's any other framing you'd like to offer before we jump through some slides, I'll hand it to you.
Okay. Thanks, Alyssa, and thank you all for inviting me to join you at your TAC meeting. I'm very, very excited to have the TAC in place, and I'm also very excited to hear about OTELA. It's gonna be real adventure, I think, to watch how you develop that and roll that out. And I just want you to know that the council is very supportive of it and wants to just learn as the process unfolds how we can partner with you in that effort. So we know we have a lot to learn. As Alyssa said, we, we realize in hindsight that we were really neglectful five years ago as far as not having a consultation relationship with the tribes, and we definitely want to support that and be involved in that in this revision of the the strategic plan. We have a lot to learn from you all, and I think as you put OTELA together, we're going to learn a lot that will apply beyond your alliance, but also to the other early learning hubs throughout the state. Most of them have relationships with tribes, if there are tribes living within their boundaries. And I think this whole process is going to be really excellent as far as helping us build those relationships and make sure this new plan is really reflective of what you all are wanting for your children and families. So just know that the council is excited to be a partner in this, and we know we're gonna be on a learning curve, so. And we're very fortunate to have Angie as a member of our council. She is frequently at our council meetings representing tribal perspective, so that you are at our table with Angie as a representative, and Angie does a great job. So Angie, I'll let you jump in and, and make your comments, since you're actually a part of this committee.
Thank you, Sue. I just, I want to say that I, I believe that there, there was a consultation relationship before, but it was through ODE. And because the division, we weren't our own agency yet, our consultation happened as part of the G2G clusters in education. And so at the time that Raise Up Oregon, and you know, OG was written, there wasn't an agency to actually have the consultation relationship with. I, I feel very confident that, that the council and the agency, DELC, are very committed to this consultative relationship. And I'm, I appreciate that Alyssa was in the governor's office and also a part of the ODE GGG meetings in the past. So I just think that the next step here is really formalizing this through our strategic plan, and, and then also the way OTELA folds into what Raise Up Oregon is, and this group having a voice at that table, so. Appreciate the intentionality behind the council and the division trying to build this and make it happen, and I know it's a slow-moving process, but I, I feel confident myself that we'll make it exactly what we want it to be. Thank you.
Well, oh, Alyssa?
No, I was gonna say, I'll hand it over to Remy.
I was about to say, I think it's a, I think it's my turn to come up in this conversation, and I just want to be really clear that the RUO 2.0 was my joke. We're calling it the Raise Up Oregon Second Edition, and as Alyssa said, we are in the process of developing a introduction to a draft. I, we're, we're, we're in our December Early Learning Council meeting, we're trying to present some options that will eventually morph into our first draft. So I was here to talk about where we are in the process, where we're going, and what the timeline looks like. And then I'm going to be sharing a jam board with some questions, because originally, I would love to facilitate a conversation where we talk about some questions and I get your feedback. You are very busy people. You have very important things on your docket. We have created a jam board with questions for you to respond to. Hopefully by the end of the month, and then we will incorporate your answers into our next product, should I say. Draft is a strong word for me, are. But let me open up the PowerPoint really fast. Here we go. We're just gonna blast through these slides so that we can actually have a conversation. So. Oh, any questions? Okay, cool. So I'll be pausing for questions throughout the presentation, so if you have a question, hold on to it for about 30 seconds until I ask you for questions. How about that? I promise that I'll ask regularly. So as Alyssa said, we had our first Early Childhood System Strategic Plan, Raise Up Oregon 2019 to 2023. It is the end of 2022. Therefore, we are working on our next version, and I'm really glad to hear everyone talk about just where we didn't get the input of our valued tribal nation partners in the first edition, and we are trying to make it way more explicit this time, and I'm really excited to be here and talk to you about it and get your input. So just a quick refresher, this is the original vision of Raise Up Oregon. All of Oregon's young children deserve the best start, zip code race and family, and should not predict a health, educational, and like outcomes of Oregon's children. So we're talking about the five sectors that we see from our perspective. We see the health, the K-12, housing, human services, and education, early education from our perspective, and we recognize that that's not exactly how tribal nations may see the five sectors of government and you interact. It's just, it, it's so, it's such a singular perspective from our government seat. We have our five sectors. We very much recognize the difference between our sectors. Everyone outside of us doesn't necessarily see us as these separate sectors, and it's just a completely different experience looking in at us. And that's what we want to know from you, is how do you view our government sectors? And how do you interact, and how do you want to interact with us? So just a, also, quick grounding in our racial makeup of early children, or the early childhood population in Oregon. As you can see, we have the percent of our population in the teal. We've got about 61% of our early childhood population is white, yet 15% of our early childhood population who is in poverty identifies as white. Let's look over here on the left side of the chart. 2% of our early childhood population identifies as AIAN, yet 23% of our early childhood population, AIAN, is low income. I don't have to do much convincing to show you that these numbers are disproportionate, and this is exactly what we're trying to alleviate in our Raise Up Oregon Second Edition and the future. Oops. Okay. So this is where we were at in our first Raise Up Oregon. We've got our three shared goals. Our children arrive ready for kindergarten, children are raised in healthy, stable, and attached families, and the early learning system is aligned, coordinated, and family-centered. I can already tell you, I don't have the goals that we are working with at this point. We are refining our goals for the second edition. And once again, this is exactly why we're coming to you, to ask questions. I know that we are going to be retooling these three goals, and I believe we are going to be adding a fourth goal around culture, and I would love to hear your perspective on how we can make that goal work. So I know that we're going to be switching around the numbers of these goals. The early learning system is aligned, coordinated, and family-centered, is probably going to go from goal three to goal one. We're changing the verbiage. We're trying to shift the perspective from the individual child is ready for kindergarten to kindergarten is ready for the child. And I know that we're going to be adding a fourth goal relating to imbuing culture into the early learning system and the early childhood system. I'm not exactly sure what that language is gonna look like yet, and your input is going to be really crucial in how we develop that goal, and then how we develop the strategies into that goal. I want to pause right now and ask for any questions. I'm kind of just like rushing through this, because, you know, time, construction of man, of course. Okay. Okay, we're gonna keep moving on, because once again, time, construction of man, but we adhere to it. Um, so this is just quick, you know, Raise Up Oregon 2019 to 2023. This is the ideas, values of the original plan. You know, it's a five-year plan for the system. It's focused on pre-ado age five. You can go through and read the different pieces of the, like, the different values of the first plan, or the different ideals, and then the core values that we developed the first plan, embed equity throughout, represent all sectors. Address the whole child nested in family and community. I think that's a really important value that we are adhering to in our second edition. I, I don't think we're leaving behind any of these core values. I think we're just going to be adding and evolving our core values. This is just a readdress, or just kind of a reminder of where the Raise Up Oregon is coming from, not necessarily where we're going. Okay, and, oh, and here we go. Into the input to Raise Up Oregon Second Edition, 2023 to 2028, 2028 feels so far away, doesn't it? And I'm sure 2023 felt so far away back in 2019. So now we are working to revise the Raise Up Oregon Second Edition, which I lovingly acronym, acronymize, acronymize as RUO 2.0, which is an update to today's reality vision and strategies. We're trying to acknowledge the work that has happened in Raise Up Oregon First Edition, while also trying to push the boundaries of what we can make happen in the second edition. Um, so we've been working with our partner agencies across the sectors, which include all of our partner agencies represented on the Early Learning Council. Represented on the early learning council. We're also working with our partner groups. Obviously, we have you here, the TAC. We're working with the early learning hubs. We've just begun a partnership with early learning hubs to move forward with some community engagement through the early learning hubs. And we're trying to work more closely with our agencies in conjunction with the early learning hubs. More on that later. Let's see. And any, any questions so far about this revision process? I can talk more deeply and in more detail on any of this. I'm kind of glossing over some details. I'm seeing some shaking heads. Thank you, Andy.
This is Valerie.
Hey Valerie.
Hey, I just had a thought, you know, I was looking, I'm looking at your slides and lesson two, you know, and for our communities, where does it talk about us building upon the strengths that are already there in the community? And, you know, we talk a lot about deficit, but there's so much strength and resilience and in families and communities. And how can we bring that out more?
Valerie, that's a good question. I'm gonna write that down and I'm not gonna have a good response to it. Alyssa and Sue, I'm not sure if you have a more educated response than I have, but I think that's a really good question.
Well, I think, thank you Valerie for bringing that up. I think that's really to what we want to reflect through this process. How do we capture what is working well? And lift those up as models to scale or to build off of rather than, you know, pursuing a path of duplicating efforts or trying to start over when there is a model we can refer to. And I think particularly because the tribes have different government models than the state does. That's a really wonderful way to kind of lift up and say, how could we as state agencies do work differently and learn from the strengths of the tribes as one example of, of really looking at what's working well and not just what we want to improve. So I think, I think as we go through the kind of reflection questions and the input, it'd be wonderful to lift that up and talk about building up instead of just starting over.
Thank you, just a thought.
That's great. Thank you, Valerie.
Any other good questions on these slides?
All questions are good, right?
It's true, especially ones like Valerie's.
This is Sue. Valerie, I'd love to just add one thing to that. I agree, it's an excellent question. And one of the things that we're learning as a council from the early learning hubs that are, you know, distributed all over the state is that there are many strong models and strong programs that are having a tremendous, tremendously positive impact on kids and families. And we're trying to do our best and Alyssa is really working on this with her staff to share those positive models and, and programs so that we can all learn from one another. And I think that's exactly what your question is bringing up is how do we make sure that we're learning from those and aware of what they are. So, yeah, I appreciate that lots.
I, I also think that one of the reflection questions, which will, I'm jumping ahead just by talking about it, is talking about one of the reflection questions that we're going to ask you to engage in, in this jam board before the end of the month is what were the successes of Raise Up Oregon and what should we be continuing? And I think that that's going to be a really great, great question to get at what you're talking about, Valerie. Like what, like what were the successes? What's working well now and how can we continue to build it? And because there's just really no point in building something new. I mean, that's the point of the original Raise Up Oregon, right? Now we're trying to continue to build something. We've been working on it for five years and there is zero point in starting over. That would just be a waste of time and energy at this point. And I really hope that everyone here, like I, not that I hope, I know that everyone here has successes to talk about. And like, tell us about your successes. That way we can share your successes with everyone and start replicating them across the state. And that's the point of Raise Up Oregon.
So Remy, this is Sue again. I want to make one comment about this slide that is up on the screen. As of about what, two weeks ago, I think, the governor appointed Ben Cannon, who is head of the Higher Education Coordinating Commission to the council. So there actually are now six state agencies that are partnering in an effort to build this early learning system in Oregon. And needless to say, with the workforce crisis that we're all facing, having heck higher ed at the table is going to be a very, very important added voice as we figure out how can we meet the needs of kids and families in Oregon.
This is Jennifer Jackson from the Climate Tribes. I just had a comment, not about the planning of this. I, I guess just to comment about the Raise Up Oregon in general. The objectives for the original Raise Up Oregon seem to focus a lot on the preschool age children. And there's not a lot of funding for the zero to three year age. And so I'm wondering if there's gonna be a shift to include more funding for that age group because we want, it talks about providing services for prenatal to age five, but there's a huge focus on the preschool age kids and not the, the, the zero to three age group. So I wonder if, at the state level, if there's gonna be more funding available.
That is such a good question. And I feel like Alyssa might be able to answer it a little bit more eloquently. But I think that it's kind of a chicken and the egg question. Like, we're focusing in the original Raise Up Oregon on the preschool population. We want to pull upstream. We know that early childhood equity and disparities are going to be eliminated, reduced slash eliminated earlier on in the age range. And by producing this strategy document that focuses more on zero to three, then we start asking for more money on that zero to three front. If that kind of makes sense. So like by putting our priorities more in Raise Up Oregon behind that zero to three population, then we would be moving the funding more towards that zero to three population, especially because in the original Raise Up Oregon that we are currently in, we've seen huge success in getting funding for that preschool age. And we've moved the needle really, really far in delivering services for that preschool age range. And Alyssa, I'm not sure if you want to add anything to that.
No, I think that's right. There's little icons of like babies that show up next to strategies. Because you're exactly right, Jennifer, as we created it, we wanted to draw attention to the infant toddler specific strategies. Because so many partners view preschoolers and they're not thinking about the zero to three years. So that's a great reflection too, as we think about this next iteration and really having an emphasis on infant toddler strategy, since we have made so much progress in the preschool age space. And as Remy said, the, the hope would be that by having clear strategies, we can both dictate work that can be owned by all the agencies impacted and by other partners and with the tribes while creating the case for increased investments in infant toddler work. So making sure we can leverage existing opportunities and existing infrastructure while having bold expectations for what we want to achieve for our infants and toddlers and make the case with the legislature to start funding those bodies of work as well.
Well, and I would add, Jennifer, from a early learning council perspective, we've only appointed one committee of the council to date. And that committee is a home visiting system committee. In fact, Julie is sitting on the working team helping with that. Thank you very, very much, Julie. Appreciate. I know it's a big lift. So I appreciate your support. But I think that forming that committee is a reflection, Jennifer, of the council's interest also in having more of that prenatal to three focus on our work. And certainly on the next version of Raise Up Oregon. So great insight and great question.
Any other questions? I've only got a couple more slides to go through. And I'm sure they're just gonna generate more good questions and discussion. This has already been really impactful. I also want to be mindful of time. I don't know who, I don't know when I'm supposed to be kicked off.
Go ahead, Remy. We're supposed to move on to another topic in a few minutes, but I know there's some other stuff you want to get to, so.
Totally.
Keep pushing through and then.
I'll make it quick. Thank you. Also, I forgot to apologize upfront. My camera is not working on my computer right now. I would totally be camera on if I could. I'm sorry about that. I forgot to apologize for that. Anyway, cool. Well, I'm gonna move on to the next. I think the next is just a timeline. Yeah, here we go. So this is just a quick overview of where we're at, where we've been, where we're at and where we're going. So we started doing this work in May. We went through and gathered a bunch of documents. And this is something that I wanted to let y'all know. And this is kind of a frame that we're working with right now. We went through and gathered a bunch of agency documents, like it's a strategy document, it's a community engagement report, it's a data report. A bunch of different documents from a span of different intents from our five agency partners. And I, one of the things that I noticed that I'm really worried about is how every single agency is having an individual conversation with each of your tribes at different levels and different repetition. And personally, I'm very worried about the communication burnout that comes with something like that. Especially because back to the refrain, we at the government see each other as separate entities. We see each other as separate government agencies. Anyone else outside of government is just gonna see us as one government. So I can imagine that from an organizational standpoint, it's pretty annoying to talk to all five of us separately at different rhythms with different depths. So that is one thing that I noticed in the information gathering that I wanted to reflect back at you. And I'm sure you already know that. And I just learned it. So that's where we've been is the compiling information and identifying themes, July to September twenty twenty two. Um, and we've been starting to discuss these themes between the early learning council, our state agency partners. And now number five, prepare draft plan. I'm just still, I put that language in there, draft plan. We're putting big air quotes around that. It is not necessarily a draft plan. It's kind of a, I, I don't really know what to call it. And that's why that's in there. It's a first crack at a draft plan, should I say, that we are going to be presenting to the council in our December fourteenth, twenty twenty two meeting. And that's going to be based off of our information gathering that we're doing, as well as our engagement that we're doing with groups like the TAC, groups like the Early Learning Hubs, groups like our division leadership team. We're doing engagement with a couple of different groups like that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify because these read is kind of absolutes. And so I wanted to. The way we've started is we wanted to make sure that the early learning council, the agencies participating in the early learning council had an understanding of all the work they were doing. And then we wanted to look across those bodies of work. So as Remy mentioned, what agency strategic plans have already been created? What are those community engagement plans, especially in the context of budget development and some of the directions from the governor? And so that's what started in May. We also got a list of what tables are the agency partners currently setting? What community engagement opportunities are already established that we can leverage as opposed to setting new tables? So it really was May to June, getting a lay of the land in terms of agency plans already. And then we looked at that information across all the five agencies who were participating at the time. So higher education hasn't been a part of this yet. And looked at common themes to be able to show the agency directors that even though everybody has their own strategic plan, there's overlapping work to really reinforce the cross sector coordination. That's really central to Raise Up Oregon. And then really this fall, in October is when we started to actually engage partners, engage the council, engage the hubs in terms of kind of a keep, start, stop. What are the reflections about the current version of Raise Up Oregon? What do they want to see going forward? So I wanted to really clarify that the TAC is coming in at the beginning of the engagement process. Everything else was making sure we had an understanding of state agency work that was already being done. So to Remy's point, what we're bringing to the early learning council at their December meeting is really just a reflection and summary document of everything we've heard over the last two months in terms of engagement and feedback. What do early learning hubs, the TAC, agency partners want to keep in Raise Up Oregon? What isn't relevant anymore? And what do we need to add? And then we'll start getting into really developing the plan going forward. So we're really in the early stages of even reflecting on what's been, were happening and what we need to do going forward.
Yeah, Alyssa, thank you so much for like expounding on what I'm saying. And this is exactly why I'm a policy analyst and Alyssa is the director. I'm, this is not an absolute. In fact, we made this timeline and I, it, it is exactly everything Alyssa just said. We're, we're at the beginning and we're just entering, we're about to enter this giant phase of community engagement. In fact, I would say we're entering it like in this meeting, like this is the first step in our giant phase of a community engagement where we're going around and talking to so many different groups. It's going to be a lot of work that I'm very excited about personally, but also a lot of work between now, especially as we get into January and February is gonna be really where the bulk of this community engagement work is really gonna start falling down. So yeah, yeah, exactly what Alyssa said. And thank you, Alyssa, for clarifying my nerdy policy ways. Appreciate that. And if anyone has any questions on everything we're talking about, because this is something that we sit with every single day. And I can imagine that it's a lot of mumbo jumbo coming from us.
And so this is the, as Remy said, we kind of outlined this last spring. How are we going to go about this work knowing that Raise Up Oregon one point O is ending? So I would also expect that these will shift, especially since legislative session will be happening. So one of the things we really wanted to hear from you all is, you know, how does the TAC want to be a part of this process? Well, obviously make sure there's deep engagement on what you want to see in the work. But how does the TAC, does the TAC want updates? How do you kind of want to participate in this process over the next seven, eight months and possibly beyond? Because in my mind, I could see this actually pushing into next fall, just given the lift and the complexity.
Oh, Alyssa. I'm so glad to hear you say that. I see this timeline as very ambitious and pie in the sky. And we'll see if we actually. If we get this thing published by next December, I will consider it a win.
Is there one more slide, Remy?
Yeah, there's one more slide and I honestly can't remember what it is. I think it might just be a closing slide. Oh, and here we go. Oh, this is just us talking about the gathering information. Well, this is just a broad outline of what we've been doing. Pulling stuff like this is, so we spent like a month and a half, like two months reading a bunch of documents that were just from around everywhere in Oregon. And just pulling the strategies, priorities and challenges. And it was a very interesting exercise for me personally, just to see how, how siloed state agencies truly are. And I think that's one of the things that we're trying to do with Raise Up Oregon is identify those silos and then start to break them down in the early childhood system. So, which is exactly, I just, I just think that the TAC and our external groups are in such a better position to see those silos because you experience them. And which is another reason why your feedback is so critical, because we don't want to continue making those mistakes and frustrating you. And we want to be serving you to the best of our ability and actually make some outcomes happen. So just kind So just kind of expounding on everything that we were just talking about. I don't know if anyone has any questions about the slide, otherwise I'll just pull down the slides or if Alyssa you want to add anything.
That's perfect. So I know we're over time. We, Remy dropped a link. We'll, we'll send this out as well. We wanted to make sure you all had some space that wasn't rushed in this ninety minute meeting. To look through Raise Up Oregon and kind of answer. There's some reflective questions we've put out, but really to. Kind of tell us what work you, you think needs to continue, what work needs to be modified. And what work really needs to, it's not relevant anymore, it's not quite accurate. Or Jennifer, we need to make sure that there's a stronger infant toddler emphasis. One of the questions we have is really what specific strategies or objectives you all would like to see related to tribal children. There are no callouts in the previous iteration of Raise Up Oregon that mentions particular populations. Or has any direct directives to state agencies around government to government consultation? Or serving tribal children and their families? So really want to think about with you all, how do you want that work to show up in the next iteration of Raise Up Oregon? And what expectations and standards do you want to set for the agencies involved in the Early Learning Council? And in the early learning system? So that's what the questions are really trying to get at. And Remy, does everyone have editing access? I know I only have view access.
Oh dang, this is technology. You'd think I've got a better handle. Here we go. It, it's, we are done. You have editing access now. Thank you, Alyssa, for pointing that out.
So folks can just start typing in the slides. Is that right, Remy?
Yeah, yeah. So there are like little post-it notes. You can just double click. It's, if you've never used a Jamboard before, welcome. This is the future. This is your future, I promise. Google bought Jamboard because it's such an easy platform for us all to collaborate on. But there are some just pretty general questions about this. And also I want to say this isn't going to be the first time I pop up in your Zoom meeting. I'm going to be here annoying you for at least the next year. So we're really excited to be here and we're really excited about the feedback you're going to give us in these questions. If you can have, I know that everyone has burning answers. And if you can insert them into the Jamboard by the end of the month, I would be super appreciative. If you have any trouble using the Jamboard, please email me. I think most of you have my email at this point.
We'll include that in the follow-up, Remy, that way.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll send you out a follow-up email. And I know that I am out of time here. Thank you so much for listening to me. Thank you so much for being a part of the Raise Up Oregon two point O. And we're really, really looking forward. I have a really good feeling about this second edition. Maybe I'm biased. And if you don't have a good feeling about the second edition, please let me know because I would love to fix it so that we all feel good about it. But other than that, I will relinquish speaking abilities to the other people in this room.
Thanks, Remy. Yeah, well, we'll make sure that link gets communicated out and then make sure everybody understands and provide some more guidance on how you can. Get access to the Jamboard and provide feedback. Sandy and Valerie, so we have nine minutes left. That might be enough time, but I want to get your, so we still have an agenda item to discuss. The grievance process and maybe like how we're going to move that, that term and start. Maybe changing it to barriers. Did you want to try to wrap that up within nine minutes or do you want to save that for another? TAC meeting.
Well, I'd like to give the, I'd like to give folks some food for thought in regards to that. Okay, as we, as we move forward with this work, because we've made super good progress. And I would hate to see us not continue with that momentum. So I'll just kind of jump in and not take a bunch of time. How's that? So when we were, when as a group, we were putting together the framework for the Tribal Alliance. Early Learning Alliance, one of the things that we felt was important was how do we help our tribal providers? Navigate through the system of licensing and conducting business, having a preschool in. And one of the areas that we identified was, we called it at the time grievance, helping with grievances. And I think we need to be careful about that. Grievances is, is kind of a loaded term. And instead, let's talk about, I'd like to see us reframe that into a discussion about. How do we help our tribal providers with barriers that they have to being able to do business as a preschool provider? So, so there are some constraints around that. I mean, anything that is, and Alyssa, you need to correct me when I go off track here. Anything that is an O A R or an O R S, right? Or, or Oregon administrative rule or an, or a law, a statute. We don't have a lot of, we don't have any way around that, right? Those are, those are laws, those are rules that are in place. But where we can help our tribal providers are those barriers that are getting in the way of licensing like. Like those. Oh my God, Alyssa, the word physical, the physical things, the structural did like, I don't have enough bathrooms. Or there's not enough square footage for the amount of kids that I have, but it's like within twenty square feet. So why can't we just kind of make this work? So those, those are the kind of barriers that. I feel, and, and this is me talking to the group, that I feel that we could be really helpful with, with our tribal providers. That those infrastructure things, those licensing things, like when I have staff. That has years of experience, but doesn't have the training, so their ORO numbers are low. So what can we do to kind of help them work through that and, and become. Get their, their staff where their staff needs to be, those kinds of things. What we can't help with, again, are those things that are Oregon administrative rules or Oregon or, or statute. Things like allegations of abuse or neglect, right? That's, that's not an area that we really need to be, that we shouldn't be stepping into. There's a full infrastructure around that. But we need to come up with a, we need to come up with a process and some guidelines. About how we're going to be able to help our tribal providers navigate the system. So with five minutes left in the meeting, I don't really feel like we could have a real robust discussion about that. But I feel like, I feel like we could, we need to be thinking about that. I feel like we need to be prepared as we come into December's meeting. To have a, a good, solid discussion about what does that look like for the OTELA to help our folks. And I would say that if there are questions or concerns about whether or not. A, a barrier falls under the Oregon, an O R A or an O R S, that that's something that probably Valeria or. Alyssa can help us with, right? Is there anything that I'm, Valerie, help me out. Is that, that kind of nutshell, that discussion for us?
It does. And then, you know, one of the things that we, we also brought up too, and we was hoping that. Somebody would look into it for us was the native language teacher, cultural education. And how that licensure. Would be beneficial to recognize in. Early learning. And, you know, I know that as far as a tribe, we. We take other classes on top of the, the, you know, them knowing the language. But we also take classes in. Classroom management, linguistics, you know, anything to do to strengthen our language. As, and you know, then we look at it this other way, that early learning, you know, classes. You know. All, you know, all of those helpers that help a language or cultural education. Or a teacher go into these environments as well. So those are some of the thoughts that I had as far as the native language teachers. And cultural education teachers.
I, I will share this with the group because I feel pretty comfortable about being vulnerable with you. I was pretty shocked, embarrassed, I don't know. When after fifteen years as a child welfare professional, including all aspects of the program and as a supervisor. When I turned in all of, and having a bachelor's degree, turned in all my information and I, that's an oral three, okay? So, so I think that's a, that's an area that, that as a group, we can step in and help. Because I, I feel like we probably have some very experienced. Folks out there who could be as benefit to our, to our youth and our, in our programs. Who on, on the, in the ORO scale are, are going to be like me and can't even be alone in the room with the kids. Can't even walk in the door, right? So I, 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 I feel like that's something we really need to work on as a group. So, so again, when we're looking at barriers, those are the kind of things that we need to, that's the kind of stuff that we need to be looking at. So. So we can move that agenda item.
Jonah, too. Yeah, we'll need to further define the process of the guidelines, but at least we kind of reframed it as. Moving away from that grievance word because it's very loaded and now we're talking more about barriers. So I think we'll update the organization document with that term as well. Make sure we put that feedback in there. Alyssa, we have a couple of minutes left. I don't know if you had any general updates. To share with the group.
I don't think so. The Tribal Affairs Coordinator, that administrative specialist position closed. And so I know Valeria is going to be working on recruitment. I know a couple of Sandy, Sonia, you kind of offered to help with. Interviews, so expect, expect us to take us up on your offer. So that, that will be happening. And then we are also just about primed on the grant agreement. So I think Valeria has a quick update there so that we can get those done. We have the person at O D E who's been doing this work primed to get these out the door. I'll hand it back to Valeria.
So Alyssa, yeah, we're really excited. I was so happy to come back and learn that. That was something that was made huge progress on. So we know that we're looking at intergovernmental agreements for each of the nine tribes at one hundred and thirty-three, four forty-four. Tribes can use these funds, as you know, for collecting general background information from you all designating. The Oregon Tribal Early Learning Alliance, which by the way, I love that name. Engaging with this advisory committee as you've been and other subgroups that are created from this work. And, you know, working with us on the goal setting prioritization and determining best organization of the future OTELA. These are ready to pretty much go and we're just looking for contact information. That we could get from each of the nine tribes here. Who will the grant, the grant contact person be, so to speak? And you can email me directly and I'm happy to put this also in the notes so that. We, you know, make that request over email as well because I know that. You're probably going into another meeting. Hopefully not, though. You're going to go home soon. And yeah, we, we just need to get those contacts in order and then we'll get everything sent off. So that you all can begin your processes for having, you know, your, your lawyers or organizations or whoever needs to review those. And, and begin getting those in place. The second thing that I just wanted to tack on to the hiring process is we are, as you know, going to get that back to you. Rewritten for the, the, I guess it's the policy analyst position that was. The one that we needed to take some stuff off of. And once I send that back on. I am looking for two other volunteers potentially from the Tribal Advisory Committee. If you want to do it again, Sandy and Sonia, you're welcome to. But if we want to change them out and have other committee members participate, we'll be looking to do. Interviews also for that, but the, the posting won't happen until likely the end of this month or beginning of December. So there's some time still to make decision on that.
Valerie, can I ask you a question? When you were talking about the grant contact person, when you send that, that email out to us, could you give a little like description? And, and or, you know, so that when we're, when we're asking who are, who they, our tribal council wants us to be to. Have the contact person be that, that we can give them like a description of what was it, it's about and, and that kind of thing?
Certainly. I'll make sure to clue to blurb about who the person and what that purpose is for. So that you guys can have all the things you need to explain.
It'll, it'll come much better from you than me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that it, Valeria? Okay, we're a little over time. Valerie, I think you could close this out if there's nothing else.
Sure. Thank you heavenly Father for bringing us here all together. Lord, I ask that you watch out for each of the families here. Watch out for their families, their loved ones and safe travels back home. In your name we pray, amen.
Alright, thank you.
Mercy everyone, Askey. It's really good to see you all.